Okay, welcome everyone. It's time to call the order. Our commission meeting will start with an invocation given by Commissioner Perry, after which a pledge of allegiance given by Auditor Shirley Larson.
Our dear Holy Father, we come before this time grateful for the blessings that Thou bestowed upon us. We're grateful to be here in Boxer County and we're grateful for the moisture we received and we pray that Thou continue to bless us with the moisture needed that we will to continue to grow our water resources and be able to continue to do those things in our community that will be beneficial to those who live here and reside and enjoy the freedoms we have. We're grateful for those who serve us in the military and in first responders and in all other manners and for all the service and sacrifices they make in our behalf and are grateful for the freedoms that we are provided because of them. We ask a blessing upon those who are in special need of blessings this day that Thou will be able to have an influence in their lives and be able to be a blessing to them. We ask thy Spirit to be with us in this meeting that we can do the will of the people and follow and do the things that we need to do to take care of the business of Boxer County and we pray and ask for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Stand and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're glad to have so many people participate today and to be involved in our meeting. If any would like to participate in public comment, you have to fill out a form in the back and hand that form in here and then we'll do that public comment at the end of the meeting. Okay, we will now go to the minutes.
I would make a motion that we approve the minutes from December 18th into January 8th. And as I mentioned in administrative meeting, there was one change and it has been made already. So it would be, all those minutes would be, my motion is to approve them as they've been changed.
Second?
It's been moved by Commissioner Perry and seconded by Commissioner Vincent to approve the minutes for December 18th and January 8th after the change has been made. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go to item number three, administrative review, reports, future agenda items. Commissioner Perry?
Yeah, under the reports and possibly future agenda item, just want to make the public aware that our, one of our state representatives, Representative Peterson is down at the legislature today, almost exactly at this same time, they're doing a presentation on the idea of renaming State Road 102 through Tremonton, the Borgstrom Brother Highway in honor of the Borgstrom Brothers. For those who don't know the story, those that we lost, four brothers, all in one family in World War II. And so it's our own band of brothers, so to speak, here in Boxer County. It's appropriate because their family lived along that road. So they're working toward renaming that highway in behalf of the Borgstrom Brothers. And so Representative Peterson is doing that today in the legislature and then it will go through the Senate and hopefully in Memorial Day this year, the plan is if it all passes on Memorial Day that we will have a celebration to recognize that family and you'll start to see some signs as available coming up to recognize them. So I just want to make everybody aware of that.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, we'll move on. We will move, we're gonna skip item number four for the time being and we'll move on to item number five, emergency management issues. Anybody know of any emergency management issues going on right now?
Not right now. We are working on some things to change some policies with the county attorney's office for emergency management purposes and we're working with our management folks here in the county to hopefully in the next couple of months, getting them all trained in a special ICS course that they have to take, so.
Okay, thank you. Item number six, ARPA LA TCF, any issues there? Knowing none, we'll move on. Then item number seven, Boxer County Employee Recognition. Commissioner Perry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We want to recognize two of our employees. We recognize a lot of great employees have done phenomenal work here in the county. But particular, if you came by the county building during Christmas, during the month of December, you noticed some really impressive decorations that were put up. There was wreaths on the windows and they put up some of the decorations we've had years past. But one of the new additions this year were two huge nutcrackers. And it was 100th anniversary of the Nutcracker Ballet, which kind of came out of Brigham City, et cetera. And so it was kind of neat to have those two large nutcrackers. Now, people would initially look at that and go, you spent all this money for that. That's part of the reason this is our employee of the month recognition for these two individuals is because it didn't cost us hardly anything. They were able to find materials that are big cement tubes, cardboard cement tubes that relatively inexpensive, they didn't have to go out and buy these. They were able to hand paint them and work on them. And so for well under $500, we had two huge nutcrackers. But I guarantee you, you couldn't go out and buy something like that for anywhere near that price to have each of the pillars out front. Really stood out well. And of course, they decorated inside the building as well and made it possible for us to have our celebration of trees that we had for all the different county departments, our county, two of our personnel in the Buildings and Grounds Department, we want to recognize them this month. I don't think Jody's here because she's probably down supporting her husband with the Borgstrom Highway, but Jody Peterson and Tyson Green are our employees of the month for this month. So I know Tyson's here if he'd come up and we want to recognize them as our employee of the month for all the work they did to make this building look so wonderful during the Christmas month. And I know Tyson did a lot of work, not only on the nutcrackers, but he also built a cool tree, for those who didn't see there, the Buildings and Grounds tree. And it didn't win, but it's still a cool tree. So come on around here, Tyson, we'll recognize you. So just so everybody knows, what we do with our employees of the month is we have a couple of options. One, we take them and the other people that work in their department to lunch to help recognize their, what they've done. Because quite often Tyson and Jody going above and beyond means other members of the Buildings and Grounds Committee might have to do some extra work to help cover why they painted, et cetera. So it's a nice benefit for not just the employee, but the folks that made it so they could be the employee of the month. And/or sometimes if they can't work all that out and get out together for a lunch, then we allow them to have a selection of a certain prize that they can select up to a certain value. So it's just a way of recognizing and making sure we continue to show the value of the great employees we have here in Boxer County.
Thank you, Commissioner Perry. Now we are going to adjust our agenda. We are going to go to item 9F under Commissioners and we're going to invite Monica Holdaway, the Chairman of the Boxholder Chamber of Commerce, to come forward.
So if you want me to start, Lee, yes?
You want me to explain it or you want to go?
You can. It's a county.
All right. So under 9F, what this is, is this was a award, an award that is given to the county through the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity and they have these rural community opportunity grants. And so we looked at this grant, we worked with the chamber who's been really beneficial to our county to work with businesses, especially small businesses and in a rural community, to help them continue, all the businesses in our county to have the opportunity to reach out, work with the chamber to increase and broaden their perspective here in Boxer County. And so this rural economic opportunity grant is something we can put in for the state to share, to have us provide some money that we can work, what we're going to do in this case is pass it through to our Chamber of Commerce, who has purchased a building here in the center of Brigham City to build out that opportunity for rural businesses. And I'm not exactly sure what the intent of the money, what the, I don't remember exactly what the intent was, but I'll let you explain what the plan is.
In our building, we will have multiple offices and reasons why we have, we have incubator space, chamber space. But this grant is actually for the visitor center area. So currently the chamber has a very small visitor center area where we do get visitors who come in through the week and want to know about all of our tourism sites. This will be a larger visitor center. It will have some interactive displays in there as well as public restrooms on Main Street, which we currently do not have. And so we will be having public restrooms available. And then, like I said, we will be having reception desk area and then visitor center area where people can get more information about our county. And we, as the staff of the visitor center, can promote what we have and the businesses we have and the sites that we have. So it is designed for the public restrooms and the visitor center area of the chamber building.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion or questions?
With that, I'd make a motion that we accept this award and that we will, under grant 2509, to pass through to the Boxholder Chamber of Commerce.
Second?
It's been moved by Commissioner Perry and seconded by Commissioner Vincent that we award the GOEO's Rural Communities Opportunity Grant Contract Number 2509 to the Boxholder Chamber of Commerce. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much and thank you for adjusting the schedule so I can make it.
You bet. Thanks for coming.
Tell the Quanta's high for us.
Okay, on our agenda, we'll go back to 8A. Annie Hansen.
This is Resolution 25-01. Last year in the state legislature, they made some changes to the state code in section 68, 63G, which requires the county to adopt a privacy compliance plan related to places such as restrooms, changing areas, locker rooms. And so this is, this resolution meets the requirements of that state code so that the county will be in compliance. The main impact at this point, we don't have to go back retroactively on existing facilities, but any facilities that are built moving forward, any restrooms do need to include a single, a single person restroom.
Okay.
I'd make a motion that we approve the adoption of the privacy space compliance plan required by section 63G-31-304 of the Utah Code. Okay, apologize.
That's okay. It's not on there, but it just says.
It says Resolution 2501.
Adoption of the privacy space compliance plan required by section 63G-31-304 of the Utah Code.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded by, moved by Commissioner Vincent and seconded by Commissioner Lee that we approve Resolution, Resolution 25-01 as Commissioner Vincent has so adequately already illuminated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So we are doing 9A right now, right?
We can do that and then we can put a former agenda item.
Okay, so we have a item 9A, Discussion of Bridge Repair Located at 12,000 Northeast Highway 13. Who wants to discuss this?
We could bring Darren up, but from our Roads Department, he can tell us a little about what's going on with the bridge repair, I'm sure, up there. We have that and then we have some other issues that kind of deal along with this as part of an agreement we made with Bear River Canal Company.
So this is a canal, Bear River Canal, Canal Bridge on 12,000 North. It's what they call the East Canal. It's one of their bigger ones. And we've went back and forth some with them on their right-of-way permit or, can't remember what they, what they call it exactly, but their permit process. And I think we've made the concessions with them to, to move forward to get that signed. And our contractor started construction up there. And there was some concern by Bear River Canal Company that they didn't want concrete poured until their permit was filled out. So they are currently ready to form. I think they're probably ready to pour next week if it's possible to get that approved.
Okay, so to add this, we've had multiple discussions with Canal Company and, and I think we've all made some adjustments and tried to compromise to get this done. Most people don't understand this is a canal that has like 300 cubic feet per second water and we only have a little bit of timeframe to get that done before irrigation season starts, so.
And Bear River Canal Company's provided us with an agreement that not only affects this, but also there's, we have four other spots where there's projects that we're working on right now with, through UDOT and through the Federal Highway Administration to replace or work on some of those bridges. So they've made this agreement that my motion would be that we, under the former agenda item, that we accept this plan to go forward with this bridge repair and with this contract.
There are some legal concerns, if I can share those.
Please.
I know Attorney Hadfield had emailed some concerns with the agreement. I don't think this would impact the project. This is just standard contract language. One of the main ones that I think that you may want to adjust is in paragraph four, where it would identify the agreements that you made on the other four projects, we would just add that language in to make sure it's memorialized in the agreement, that that was part of what you had decided in, in these email exchanges.
So that would include all the bridges that we were talking about?
Yeah, just to be sure that we have it stated in writing as part of the signed contract. There's three other small issues that he saw with the verbiage and the language that we could address if we are able to just send the changes back to them. I do think if the Commissioners ask the Attorney's Office, we could move forward added, after this, to work on an interlocal agreement with the Bear River Canal Company to see if we can work out some of those issues so that there's not anything holding us back in the future working together.
Okay.
So my motion would be to accept this, our agreement with the changes from the county attorney's office as we need it, as necessary and then work with them.
So do we need to go to former agenda items first to do that or not?
Yeah, to make the motion.
Okay. So after that discussion, is there any more discussion?
Nope. I think I've got enough information. Thank you.
All right, we will then go to number four, former agenda items.
So under the former, former agenda items, I would make the motion that we accept the contract as, as we've talked about with the changes that we're asking our county attorney's office to work on, let them finish that off. But we would accept that contract moving forward that we've, and then we would continue to work with the county attorney's office to get a best understanding for future situations.
Are we, are we still on A?
That's the motion. No, we're on, we're on A, yeah.
Okay, we're on B, okay.
We made the, well, we're not on A, we're actually on former agenda items.
Former agenda items.
So we made the motion tick.
Oh, so we went down, okay. You guys threw me for a loop for a moment.
So I made the motion.
Approved.
No second.
Okay, it's been a motion by Commissioner Perry and seconded by Commissioner Vincent that we approve the agreement on the discussion of the bridge repair located at 12,000 North and four other bridges with the Bear River Canal Company moving forward. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And we would surely encourage the county attorney's office to do just what you recommended, Annie, that would be grand.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Darren. Okay, item 9B, Jordan Mathis.
Jordan Mathis, Director of the Bear River Health Department. Here, if we could go to the illustration, and I don't know if you guys can see it well, I brought copies for you as well. Hopefully you've had a chance to look at this interlocal agreement. There's, I'm going to run through just a little bit of the language from the interlocal agreement, but this illustration helps to demonstrate what the changes are. The first where, or the last whereas in the interlocal agreement really sums up a lot of what the counties, meaning Boxholder, Cache and Rich, desire to confirm, reaffirm and ratify the creation of the Bear River Health Department as a multi-county local health department and expand it to be a multi-county united local health department under the Health Authorities Act and Interlocal Cooperative Act and hereby memorializes the creation. Essentially what it's doing is it's bringing over oversight for the responsibility of mental health and substance abuse services underneath the health department. Am I right there? I didn't say anything wrong. What I want to really demonstrate, and I'll run through a few other things, but if you look at this, this illustration, that column there underneath the interlocal agreement of, between the three counties, creates the Bear River Health Department, requires the Bear River Board of Health, requires that you have a local health officer and then has the services that are offered under there and the public health programs underneath those services. That's how we exist right now. And what it does is it works to create an avenue for substance abuse and mental health to come under the umbrella of the interlocal agreement that already exists. And one of the things that the interlocal agreement creates in, I don't know if you have, would you guys like a copy of this or no? Do you have it in front of you?
I think we actually have a copy.
We had one in the packet.
Yeah, we have one in our packet.
Okay, and I want to share in, it creates in 4.14.2, it creates an advisory council that's allowed for in statute. And that advisory council is determined by the counties. So it's a, it's a council where you will confirm appointments to that council. That advisory council is meant to both advise the counties on issues around substance abuse and mental health and advise the director of behavioral health that will be put in place that will oversee those programs. The area plan, currently right now, we have a substance abuse area plan that comes from Bear River Health Department and a mental health area plan that comes from Bear River Mental Health. What it will do is it will bring those two plans together. So it's an integration of substance abuse and mental health treatment and programs. So it integrates those two things and we would have one single plan that then the counties would approve. The other thing that's been missing from this is more public input into those plans and what they need to be able to address. And so the way that this will be addressed is the advisory council will give that input, the director will develop that plan, we will bring those plans through public hearings at the Board of Health meeting for the public to give input into those plans before they get to the counties for finalization. So they will still have to go through the counties for finalization, but the public hearing process will take place at the Board of Health meeting. Those are the primary changes other than, what does that mean for Bear River Mental Health? This interlocal agreement passes on, and I really want to share some of the wording there, in 4.14.1, it talks about the counties grant the responsibility for continuing, maintaining and overseeing contracting for behavioral health programs. That's a continuation of the existing contracts that are in place. Now, those contracts will need to change some, but the overall contract will be in place with Bear River Mental Health to continue to be a primary provider. One thing that it does change for Bear River Mental Health is, we talked about that integration. Right now, they only do mental health. They will now be required, under the changes in the contract, to do mental health and substance abuse treatment. Where those things are often co-occurring in individuals, it's, it's going to provide better service for those individuals. That's really the biggest changes that this brings about. I do want to share one last thing at the very end. It is a 50-year agreement, but it does require an annual review by myself and the county attorneys to make sure that it's still in compliance with any changes to state code. But other than that, we've been working with the county attorneys from each of the counties. Your county is the first county to give it consideration. But we would hope that we can kind of move forward with this. We do need to get that director of bear, of behavioral health in place so they can start developing the contracts with the state and start developing contracts with providers like Bear River Mental Health. So.
Mr. Chair. This is the area that I've been working on the last two years. We've, we've had discussions about in the past and I can tell you that our county attorney's office, Annie Hansen specifically, has been really working hard to help us get to this point. We've had folks from the Cache County Attorney's Office as well. But we're really moving in a good direction and I really like the fact that this is going to mold, put that substance abuse and mental health together, which has been a real struggle for us in all three areas of the Bear River District. And so this is really a huge monumental, monumental step forward. And just so people know, something that we've just, you know, we know is that the Commissions and the Council in Cache County are the drug abuse and mental health authorities. And so it's our obligation to make sure we're doing this in the correct way, which I think this is. So if you're ready for a motion, I'd make that motion that we accept the multi-county united local health department interlocal agreement 2506.
Second?
It's been moved by Commissioner Perry and seconded by Commissioner Vincent to approve the multi-county united local health department interlocal agreement number 25-06. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you. Do we want to let them know that it will have to be finalized in a formal resolution?
Oh, right. Yeah, we will have a written resolution for you.
Just three counties?
Yeah, just memorializing that you made this approval. Just when, it's just one of the boxes we need to check on the process. So we'll have that at the next meeting. And then in the future, aside from these new contracts that the Bear River Health Department will work on, there is an area authority group that will need to dissolve. So we'll be coming back to the Commission with a few more documents to finalize the new structure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jordan.
Thank you.
Okay, cooperative agreement between USU Extension and Boxholder County. Mike Pace.
That's some extra reading material. I guess you didn't have enough of that to do. Mike Pace, USU Extension here. Basically, this is our, our annual cooperation meeting agreement that we have with Utah State University and Boxholder County. Basically, it's an annual one that we've signed in the past and we're asking you to sign it again. The only thing that's really changed is the 2025 date for the year and then also the office operating budget at the, on page four of that agreement. I don't know if you guys have any questions about it?
I don't have any questions.
I'd make a motion that we accept the cooperative agreement 2507 between USU Extension and Boxholder County.
Second?
It's been moved by Commissioner Perry and seconded by Commissioner Vincent to accept the 2025 cooperative agreement, number 2507 between USU Extension and Boxholder County. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Mike.
Okay, we'd invite Michael McGinnis to come up. Michael, do you want to tell everybody who you are, other than Michael McGinnis?
Yes, Mike McGinnis, Michael McGinnis, Director of the Public Defender's Office for Boxholder and Cache County. So today on the agenda, we have a contract for our legal assistant. She's actually does multiple, multiple jobs. She's also our grant assistant. She keeps track of all of our grants as well. And so now we finally have a contract for her. This is something that we needed, that was kind of not taken care of. So now everybody's under contract that we need. So we're all buttoned up and have everything as required by our grant requirements and legally. So, but that agreement, I just wanted to let you know, of her salary, 30,000 of that is paid through grants. The remaining is paid through the county.
Okay, so she will work with all of the counties? Cache and Boxholder?
She just does specifically Boxholder.
Okay.
Yep.
Great.
She's been working with us, just to let you know, for about eight years. She's been around, so.
And you're finally getting the contract done?
We're finally getting a contract for her.
Good job. Any questions?
I have any questions. I'll make a motion that we approve agreement 25-10, contract with legal assistant to assist the Boxholder County Public Defense Attorneys.
I'll second it.
Michael McGinnis.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Vincent and seconded by Commissioner Perry to approve the agreement number 25-10, contract with a legal assistant to assist the Boxholder County Public Defense Attorneys. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Michael. We appreciate it.
Appreciate it, Mike. Thank you, thank you for what you guys do.
Okay, we are at 9E. We have an indigent burial. Any questions? Anybody? Oh, Chrissy's going to tell us about it? Okay, good, Chrissy. Thank you.
Chrissy Bennett, Commissioner's Office. Christine Garber has passed away. She was a resident here at the nursing home.
It's Gables Nursing Home, yeah.
Gables Nursing Home. She is, she was basically a ward of the state. She was there on state assistance. She was homeless. She did have four children, it looks like, but she did lose them. The custody and the whereabouts are unknown after her husband passed away. So it's kind of a.
Sad thing.
Kind of sad.
Yeah.
Yep, sad thing.
It's a flat rate that we pay to Myers Mortuary, so. It's a flat rate that we pay to Myers Mortuary, so it's it's just for the cremation of her remains. And I just ask that you approve the flat rate so that when we get the invoice, we can just pay it.
I'd make a motion to approve the indigent burial for Christine Garver by Myers Mortuary.
Second.
And a motion by Commissioner Lee and a second by Commissioner Vincent to approve the indigent burial for Christine Garver by Myers Mortuary. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Chrissy. Okay, item G. Ratify signature on the Bear River Canal Company lease pool shares. And I am the one that's going to talk about this. Okay. So the county has Bear River Canal Company shares. We annually lease them back. We actually allow the Canal Company to use them to lease out for people to use, and they actually can make application to the Canal Company and use those on specific headgates as administered by the Canal Company. We, when we were talking about some of these other contracts, we tabled it for a period of time, and we've actually allowed them to do that. And so what we're doing today is just to talk with the commissioners and see if the commissioners want to ratify that process and actually approve that action.
My understanding, Commissioner Bingham, is also part of this is by us doing this, the Canal Company also allows us to use some water out of the canal every year during the fair, the annual fair, so we can draw water out of that canal during the fair, is my understanding.
Cody, would you like to come up and address that for a minute? Are you going to miss lunch? What are you looking over there? What the heck?
I was just looking. No, we we keep two of the shares for Jan's use. Actually, it's it's year round that she uses it for to keep the dust down. There's a pump on the side that she has for water truck that she tenders. So it's not only for the fair, but it's for whenever she needs it.
Oh, through the whole irrigation season?
Irrigation season, yep.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll make a motion that we accept the ratification of the signature for the Bear River Canal Company twenty twenty five lease pool shares.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Perry and seconded by Commissioner Vincent to ratify the signature on the Bear River Canal Company twenty twenty five lease pool shares. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Community Development, Scott Lyons. Did I see Scott somewhere? There he is. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate you coming.
All right, happy to be here. Got a stacked agenda for you today.
Yes, you do.
First item we have is ordinance six twelve. This is a rezone on the Promontory Peninsula. The request is by a landowner to change it from the unzoned to an MGEX zone. MGEX is the mining sand and gravel excavation zone. So this one went to the Planning Commission at their December meeting, December twentieth, sorry, December nineteenth, and a public hearing was held. No comment was taken outside of that, or no comment was received, I should say, outside of that from the applicant himself. And he owns adjacent property to these parcels that is already zoned, this MGEX zone. So following the public hearing, the Planning Commission did determine that it meets the approval standards and forwarded a recommendation of approval based on that. They did want to include in their approval that the condition that the applicant or landowner work with the county road supervisor on a road infrastructure plan at the conditional use permit stage. So this this request is just to have the zoning put in place to allow mining as a use, but the mining isn't actually allowed until the landowner comes back for the permit.
Okay, and so then Darren would be involved in reviewing the roads and the use of the roads?
Correct.
All of that?
Yep.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance six twelve hails promontory rezone from unzoned MG to EX.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Vincent and seconded by Commissioner Perry to approve ordinance number six twelve hails property rezoned from unzoned to MGEX. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, our next item is the agricultural lease agreement twenty five dash zero one. This public hearing was held at your January eighth County Commission meeting. And at that point, following the public hearing, the way the surplus property disposal policy basically tracks is that a public hearing is held, and at that point, the commission can decide to sign that lease agreement. So there was no no comment at that public hearing. This essentially, these these, there's two here, twenty five dash zero one and twenty five dash zero two. Those are two county properties located, one outside of Plymouth and the other one outside of Bear River City. The leases on those expired at the end of 2024, and these are just getting new leases in place, so.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the agricultural lease agreement twenty five dash zero one for parcel zero seven dash zero nine dash zero zero eight located in Plymouth.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Vincent and seconded by Commissioner Perry to approve agricultural lease agreement twenty five oh one for parcel oh seven oh nine four oh oh eight located in Plymouth. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we accept agricultural lease agreement twenty five oh two for parcel zero four dash zero six eight dash zero zero one six located in Bear River City.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Perry and seconded by Commissioner Vincent to approve agricultural lease agreement twenty five oh two for parcel oh four oh six eight zero zero one six located in Bear River City. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, we're moving. Okay, the next item is the planning commission, the the planning commission, members of the planning commission are appointed by the county commission. We have seven full members and two, what would they, two two alternate members is what we call them. And those alternates can participate fully if a full member is not present at at the planning commission meeting. The goal, goal of having that is so that we can always have a CORM available to to participate in those meetings. So we are short one full seat and one alternate seat. We received multiple applications. Those applications were reviewed by staff and then passed on to the county commission for their review. We did some interviews as well and passed that information along to the county commission. And the feedback we received from the county commission was to appoint Brandon East as a full member and Brian Bowen as an alternate member. Brandon lives south, kind of southwest, in the unincorporated area southwest of Tremonton City, and Brian Bowen lives in the Beaver Dam area. Brandon is here today. He came and introduced himself to me earlier. He has participated as a resident of Box Elder County in a couple different meetings on on that side, and it'll be good to have him on the other side of the desk, helping make decisions and participating in in decisions that affect his community.
Okay, anymore?
Okay. I'd make a motion to accept Brandon East as a full-time member of our planning commission and Brian Bowen as an alternate member. And I'll just point out the fact that I do know Brandon has moved into our area several years ago to get away from some of the growth that's happening in Davis County, but is very familiar with business as well as agriculture, and so I think he's going to be a great addition to our planning commission. So I'd make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Perry and seconded by Commissioner Vincent to appoint two new planning commission members, Brandon East to be a full-time member and Brian Bowen to be an alternate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A motion carries. Thank you.
Is that east like the direction?
Yes, just like the direction.
Okay, our next item is the, a requested rezone for property located at 10,255 West, 13,600 North in the Bothwell area. The request is that seventy-two point one eight acres be rezoned from the rural residential five acre zone to the rural residential two acre zone. This area is predominantly agricultural with some rural residential property. This went to the planning commission for a public hearing and review. Planning commission held their public hearing. There was quite a bit of input. Commissioner Bingham was in attendance at that meeting. I think it was all in opposition, aside from the property owner, property owner's engineer who was there representing him. With that said, as far as rezones go, there are four approval standards. Whether the proposed amendment is consistent with goals, objectives, and policies of the county's general plan, whether the proposed amendment is harmonious with the overall character of existing development in the vicinity of the subject property, the extent to which the proposed amendment may adversely affect adjacent property, and the adequacy of facilities and services intended to serve the subject property. The planning commission, following their review of the application and the public hearing, they found that the application did not meet those approval standards, and based on that, they forwarded a recommendation of denial to the county commission.
Any more questions or discussion?
Nope, I'd make a motion that we accept the planning commission's recommendation to deny the rezone, the Bothwell rezone.
I studied it as well, and I would second that.
It's been, we've got a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to accept the planning commission's proposal to deny the change from rural residential five to rural residential two. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Our next item is ordinance six thirteen. This is a text amendment to the county annexation policy that's located in our land use code. The county began, you'll see these next two items are somewhat related. The county began an amendment process to this section to create some exemptions. Over time, this policy was adopted about two years ago, and as things with most land use code, they, it's it's kind of a living code. So times change, and also you realize that there are maybe unintended consequences of certain things. So with that said, the county received some feedback from different cities as well as landowners and created some exemptions that you would see at the end of the proposal. And then during the public hearing process in December, there was a another application by some residents in the Harp Award area as far as concerns they had with the existing ordinance. So what the planning commission did was they took input from both the county, they took input from many residents at that meeting, and they also took input from, this proposed ordinance was sent out to the mayors and city administrators of of all the cities throughout the county for feedback from them as well as it does affect them as well. And the planning commission took the input from all of those various parties and directed staff to come up with some clear language that attempts to balance all interests as well as possible. So staff did that. We sent that new language back out to the planning commission at the beginning of January. They reviewed it, gave us feedback, and then it was reviewed by the county attorney with some additional input. And ultimately, what you have in ordinance six thirteen is is the final draft of that, which went to the planning commission at their meeting last week, and the planning commission forwarded a recommendation of approval of ordinance six thirteen, the language included in ordinance six thirteen. So I don't know if you have questions or discussion related to that language. I'd be happy to address that.
I I studied it. I think we, I I would agree to, I would agree with the planning commission's proposal to move forward in supporting this.
Is that a motion?
Is that a motion then?
That's a motion.
Okay.
Would you like me to make it more clear?
Just wasn't sure it was an official motion, but I would second it. I think that, you know, making sure that we're more involved in that process and that we're just not letting these annexations go crazy, I think is a smart move, so.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Vincent and seconded by Commissioner Perry to approve annexation policy ordinance number six one three and county text amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Then the final item I have is the annexation policy amendment request from the residents. This one, as they submitted an application, it's, does need to go through the full process. So this one went to the planning commission, as I stated, went through that full process. Ultimately, the planning commission recommends denial of this application, and that's solely because the other application includes that balance of what the residents are requesting as well as what the county and cities input on on that end. So to adopt this one would basically create conflict within our code, so there's a recommendation of denial on this one.
So clarify, six thirteen we just passed.
This one, there is, there is no ordinance associated with this one because it's expected to be denied based on the adoption of six thirteen.
Right, but six thirteen had everything that was in this, so yes, that makes sense. Okay. Just want to clarify that everything we needed in that text amendment was in six thirteen, taking care of that problem.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to deny the annexation policy resident text amendment.
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Commissioner Vincent and seconded by Commissioner Perry to deny annexation policy resident text amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, Scott. And I will say, I have attended those meetings, and these folks are serious about their business and appreciate all they do. Thank you. Okay, Darren, Road Department, eleven A.
Commissioner, I apologize. This one is actually the adoption of ordinance six fifteen, which amends ordinance five thirty-one. Sorry about that.
So we're adopting six fifteen?
Six fifteen, and it amends ordinance five thirty-one. Sorry, that was my mistake.
That makes sense.
All right, Darren McFarland with the Road Department. This ordinance was approved, and when staff tried to go and make the math formulas work in our current programs that the county have, we have two of them, I WORK and Civic Review, it was, it was so complex, we couldn't get it to work. So the online application for excavation permits, it was possible to get the permit but not charge them. It was, it was, so we went back with the help of our attorney's office, made sure all the verbiage in the contract and then that permit is is okay. And then we simplified the formula, so we're charging for our costs, processing fees, inspection fees, and so on. And then proposed to, to, if you approve this one, then we go forward with Civic Review to put it online so we can start charging and covering our costs for the excavation permits in the Road Department.
Okay, so do we make?
I'd make the motion to accept ordinance six fifteen under amendment with amendment five thirty-one, excavation and right-of-way encroachment.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to adopt amendment six fifteen.
Ordinance six fifteen.
Ordinance six fifteen.
Amendment six.
Amending ordinance five thirty-one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
Motion carries.
Marla's going to have fun figuring that one out in the minutes.
Okay, now we are preparing ourselves. We are getting into the public comment. Those wishing to make a public comment shall sign the comment roll and will be responsible for following the rules outlined in the county commission rules and procedures. Speakers will have one three-minute opportunity to speak regardless of the number of items they wish to address. Speakers shall address their comments to the county commission only. This is a time to be heard. There will not be a back-and-forth dialogue with commissioners. Speakers may file copies of the remarks or supporting information with the county clerk. The county clerk will make the information available to the county commission. With that taken care of, our first one is Deanna Hardy.
It was stated to a few of the Box Elder County, Box Elder Committee of Liberty members that the sheriff's seventeen thousand twenty twenty-five increase was needed to keep the sheriff. Remember that the current sheriff and candidate Jason Jensen both ran for the position for the previous salary of one hundred seventeen thousand three hundred twenty-one, which does not include all benefits. The average citizen in Box Elder County makes fifty-five thousand in twenty twenty-five. The sheriff's twenty-five salary of one hundred thirty-four thousand nine hundred fifteen The sheriff's 25 salary of 134,915 more than, is more than double of the average citizen's salary. In 2010, the sheriff was making 74,000, and the average citizen wage was, was 41,000 to 42,000. The citizen's increase was 13,000 in 15 years, while the sheriff's increase in those same 15 years was 60,000. The auditor, recorder, clerk, assessor, treasurer in 2010 made 68,000, and in 15 years, they are all making 112,000, a 44,000 increase for each position. Justice Court judge in 2010 made 90,000, and now 148,000, a 58,000 increase. County attorney made 100,000 in 2010, and now 164,000, a 64,000 increase. Commissioners made 41,000 in 2010, and now 63,000, a 21,000 increase for each commissioner. None of these amounts include all the benefits. The Box Elder Committee of Liberty petitions the commissioners to restructure the salaries of each representative to be in line with what the average citizen makes, with the commissioners making half of their 2010 salaries, because these positions are part-time. The Justice Court judge and the county attorney should go back to the 2010 rates. The citizens cannot sustain the high salaries. If representatives do not agree with the reduced rates to help their constituents, they should step down and seek higher salaries in the private sector. The high filing fees to run for public office should be reduced to a reasonable level so that those wishing to run for public office can afford to file to serve in a public position. We as citizens should not be forced to pay for governments' employees' healthcare, dental, and retirement when we cannot afford these benefits ourselves. Let us be that city on a hill that shines its light in restoring representatives' salaries back where they should be, and that is in line with the average citizen's wage of our county. This would be a fair and correct process. Thank you. And I only did, I did the amounts of everybody's salary. I didn't include the dollar amount after it, so, but you'll see it on my report that it includes the total amount of each representative's salary.
Okay, thank you. Next on our list is Joseph Summers.
Joseph Summers from Bothwell. I'd just like to thank you guys for letting the Bothwell citizens, residents, speak and supporting them in their decision to stay with the RR5. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jase Farnsworth.
Okay, so I'm Jase Farnsworth, resource coordinator over Cache County, Box Elder, and Rich County, over the conservation districts. Three years ago, I started this conservation fair. Our first one was actually in Brigham City. I was going to be at the fairgrounds, but during that time, we couldn't get into, into February, so, and we had about 150 people attend that. What these conservation fairs do is bring in all the different partners, different agencies together, along with a lot of vendors throughout the area, kind of bringing them together, bringing farmers, producers, landowners, just a central location where they come and find areas how they could improve their property, improve their conservation efforts. Last year, we had in Cache, my goal was have one in Box Elder Cache, Box Elder Cache, but it's gotten big enough. Last year, we had 250 people. This year, we're planning on about 300 in Cache, and we're also going to have one over here in Box Elder, hoping about 200. On the back is the Cache, and on the other side is the Box Elder. We're just asking if we could get the fee waived for the fairgrounds on March 6th, just to hold this event. There will also be, before this event, we're meeting as a zone, as UACD, Utah Association of Conservation Districts, having our Zone One meeting, and then following that will be the Conservation Fair. It's been a really good program. We've been able to get a lot of money into this county by these different programs, agencies. Just in the last three years, between the Water Op program and RCS and some WIG grants for the invasive, we're over $50 million that we brought into the county, so a lot of that sticks around here and helps other businesses, so I would just like to continue this and help the producers and landowners around the area.
Okay, thank you. Are you cooking?
Yep, I'll be there cooking.
That's worth going to. I've seen your work.
It's open to anybody, so.
Okay, thank you. Sean Thornley.
Just want to say thanks to you guys, and also to recognize that your planning and zoning department, they were very professional to work with throughout this process, and also the county planning commission have to compliment them in the way they, they operate, and also to encourage the commission to look very critically at any island annexations that are proposed while Harper Ward works on its community plan, and appreciate your service.
Okay, thank you. So Annie, we didn't have anything scheduled for a closed session?
I don't.
We need to take care of the warrant register, though.
Oh, we do. I haven't seen one. Okay.
It's probably under something.
There is one. Sorry, David Griffith. We got a lot of papers up here, and many a tree died for this meeting, so.
No problem. My name is Dave Griffith. I live in Harper Ward. I'm the applicant for the county annexation policy amendment that you just approved, the resident portion of it. On behalf of all of Harper Ward, we thank you very much for approving that amendment. As you may know, we completed a petition of Harper Ward residents to support the policy amendment. Simply put, the petition says we wish to preserve our rural and agricultural heritage, continue the RR5 zoning, and continue to live under county ordinances. All of this is to retain our current lifestyle, rural lifestyle. We do not want to live in the city, and over 80% of Harper Ward residents signed this petition, which was submitted to the county planning commission to be recorded. We strongly oppose mandatory annexation requirements linked to land use change applications which force us into Brigham City. We appreciate that the annexation policy change relieves us from these forced distant island annexation situations which carve up Harper Ward in patchwork fashion even up to three and a half miles from Brigham City limits. What is left to address then is voluntary island annexation petitions to Brigham City. We have accepted the county planning commission's suggestion to create a community plan. We understand that you, the county commission, must approve all island annexations to any city. We hope that a community plan, which documents Harper Ward residents' future vision, will be a tool for the county commission to evaluate potential island annexation petitions. I am requesting that you put a pause on any Harper Ward island annexation approvals until we create the community plan. If a pause is not workable, then I request that you deny approval for any such annexations until we can create, create the community plan. This plan will allow you to evaluate any proposed annexations for compatibility and harmony with the character of Harper Ward and its future vision. I realize that you may have a concern about the timeframe for creating the community plan. We are requesting the help and guidance of Scott Lyons to expedite the plan. All Harper Ward residents will be invited to participate. I realize that you may be concerned that this plan process drags out and puts you in a bad position for pausing annexation approvals. We could mitigate this concern by establishing a deadline, for instance, one year. Speaking for myself, I don't think any distant island annexations make sense in Harper Ward. This would carve up Harper Ward in piecemeal fashion with some parcels under city ordinance and some under county ordinance, just to name one issue. I understand that the state allows island annexations, but I don't believe that it requires them, and so you have the freedom to deny island annexations as you see fit.
Your time's up. Sorry, three minutes is the limit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, is there anything else that needs to come?
We need to assign the personnel action here.
Oh, we do.
Marla, that was the updated contract for Bear River Canal Company.
It's good, then?
Mm-hmm.
What's that?
Can't be signing.
He's got a date on it.
No. You need to date that.
He needs to sign it.
He needs to sign it.
Kind of signatures.
When they're all signed, I'll give you a final motion. Actually, we probably should have, do I sign this from December meeting? We've got chair under my name.
You can cross it out.
Yeah, you can just.
So we'll just put.
Yeah, I'll, I can fix it. I'll just cross it through and put Commissioner, and then you know, Ms. Chairman. Just trying to figure out what you were saying.
Perfect. Got them all?
Accept one, final motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.